All right, welcome to the Bothell City Council Meeting for March 3rd, 2020. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we have all in attendance except for Councilmember Dewar, absent and excused, and we have the meeting agenda approval. Any changes? Seeing none. All right, we'll look at... Oh, do we? Oh, yes, we have.
It's A B, let's see, where is it, 20, number 20-34, the public hearing in consideration of an ordinance amending sections of the downtown sub-area regulations providing for historic preservation, and we need to pull that agenda.
All right. All right, aside from that, we'll move forward. So on to public engagement opportunities. So we have the Bothell Art Walk, March 12th, 5:00 PM in downtown Bothell. So there's a new art exhibit at City Hall Gallery, Joy Hagan's Flow, until the 24th of April, and then looking for updates on COVID-19, check out the Bothell website, forward slash coronavirus, and then we have additional information on our website. All right, proclamations. I'm gonna read, okay? You're gonna look appreciative, because I'm appreciative, and then we'll shake hands, pump elbows, I don't know. Yep, so Derrick Smith appreciation, whereas the strength of our community is founded in the partnerships built between businesses, government, nonprofits, and dedicated Bothell residents, and whereas we thank Derrick Smith, CEO of Economy Fence, for approaching the Parks and Recreation Department with a small but meaningful question, how can I give back to Bothell? And whereas, knowing the fence around the North Shore Senior Center's health and wellness building fell over during a winter storm last year, Economy Fence's offer was directed to the North Shore Senior Center. And whereas, through the generosity of the Economy Fence Center's Good Neighbors Fence Program, Derrick Smith graciously donated time, resources, and materials to construct a beautiful new wood fence at the North Shore Senior Center's memory care facility, and whereas, the estimated $25,000 project was completed in February for this year and ensures the center's participants with Alzheimer's, dementia, and other disabilities can now safely spend time outdoors. And whereas, we recognize and celebrate this wonderful example of a Bothell business giving back to the community. Now therefore, I, Mayor Liam Olson, on behalf of the Bothell City Council, do hereby express our appreciation to Derrick Smith and Economy Fence for their generous contribution, neighborly spirit, and devotion to Bothell. So, thank you. Do you like to say anything?
I guess I wasn't come prepared to say anything, but I would just say, it was a pleasure doing the project. I was amazed at how much traffic goes through that place, and it was, Brook Knight was fantastic to work with, and I know it was appreciated and was glad to be able to contribute. So, that's all I have.
Thank you.
I'm President of North Shore Senior Center.
Okay, hi.
I'm John Dolan, I'm the President of North Shore Senior Center, and we have about 10,000 people that come through our locations every year, and we just about closed down until he came forward to put up the fence. I thought the fence was gonna be a cheap chain link fence, and then I drove by one day and there was a fence there with a beautiful black coating, and it wasn't low, it was high enough to keep our dementia people from jumping over the fence and a 10-foot cliff on the other side. And I said, you know, that won't look too bad, even if it's in the front. Well, I would go by the next day, and there was a beautiful wood fence, so, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, appreciate that. Thank you again. Okay. Yes, I imagine we might have a few people that might wanna...
Don't, don't quite go, I just, I, no, no, you don't have to sit down. I just wanna say, I saw this, I haven't been by to see the beautiful fence, but what a gift. I mean, you, you added to the aesthetics and the safety, and it's, your touchpoints in just a fence were huge, and so, I know we're all very appreciative, and I just wanted to add my thank you for that.
Can we go now?
Yes.
Hold on, hold on one second, hold on, we have a, we have a lot of, we do a lot of work with the North Shore Senior Center as NPRSA, so we have a couple other members of it, so Councilmember McNeil?
Yeah, so I also wanted to extend my gratitude and thanks and appreciation for what your company has done. Often, we sometimes forget about how vulnerable these, these folks are within our community, and this project means a lot, because we've heard a lot about it over the course of the past couple, two to three years, and for you to step up and be a business within our community, honoring those folks within our community, that's what makes us a great sense of community. So, on behalf of the NPRSA, I'd like to say thank you for what you've done for the people within our community.
Councilmember Agnew?
I too. Can't tell you how much I appreciate what you did. What you did was you showed the spirit of Bothell by your donation, by your time, by your effort. You, you've made a huge impact on the NPRSA and all the people that work in there, all the people that move around in there, they're, I don't wanna say confined, but at least we can corral them, and that's what they need sometimes, that's what we all need sometimes. Thank you very much for everything you've done.
Councilmember Thompson?
I just, again, wanted to echo the thanks to all the fine folks at economyfence.com, the fencing professionals serving the Puget Sound area for over 35 years, licensed, bonded, and insured.
Thank you.
All right, I think we're, we're done. Thank you again, once, once again. Yep. All right, so we have a special presentation, Bothell Kenmore, Chamber of Commerce.
So, hello, my name is Andrea Schaefer, I am the current Bothell Chamber Chair, and with me is Brittany Caldwell, our Executive Director, and I cannot tell you what a pleasure it is for us to get to be here today to present to you the chamber update, so, thank you for having us. So what we're gonna talk about today is a little bit about the chamber, we're gonna talk about 2019 highlights, and of course, the partnership between the Bothell Kenmore Chamber and the City of Bothell. So, we started as an association with 25 members, and then we grew and incorporated to the Bothell, the Greater Bothell Chamber of Commerce in 2003, rebranded in 2018 to the Bothell Kenmore Chamber, and have grown to nearly 400 members in that time. So, you can't talk about the chamber and how it's grown without acknowledging the people that contribute to it. So, this is our, this is our Board of Directors, and what you can see is this is a diverse group of people, ranging from small to big business, from nonprofit to profit, healthcare to food services, and this is just a dynamic group that really makes what we do possible. And as we have grown, so has our staff, we have four staff members now, and the world's best volunteer. These are our chamber community partners, and we also have our patron members, these are the people and the businesses that give it the highest level, because they believe in our mission, and they believe in what we do, which is trying to bring the business community together. All right, so, with nearly 400 members, like I said, we have been actively involved for the last 15 years in local economic prosperity, supporting and promoting business, fostering strategic partnerships with our members, serving as the official Bothell Visitor Center, and developing an active and vibrant community. We have produced over 90 events and meetings each year for our members to connect with other business representatives. And now I'm gonna pass it to Brittany for some highlights.
Thank you, it's a pleasure being here today, thanks for having us. So, what I'll be talking about is just some highlights from the last year about things that we've been doing and how we've been supporting our community. So, as Andrea mentioned, we produced over 90 events and meetings throughout the year, bringing together a total of 7,000 attendees at all of our events. The events are, they vary greatly in what they are and the purpose for each, but each time we do it, it is to gather people in the community so that they can connect and support one another. We also have unique opportunities to support our local community leaders, so for example, here, Leanne Tesariere, the owner of Country Village Shops, as our Member of the Month, also retiring Chief of Police Carol Cummings was honored last year as our Member of the Month. Of those events, five of them were large community events with half of the attendees coming from other communities. So of course, we have the Bothell Underground Beer Festival, thank you, and thanks to the city staff for supporting that event for the past many, many years. We also have our Bothell Block Party and Brew Fest, which is a partnership with our chamber and the University of Washington Bothell. We also have our Wine Walks, which occurred downtown, and all of these events, we just get so excited when we see the streets of Bothell, you know, filled with community members, filling our shops, filling our restaurants, and making for a very vibrant community. Of course, we think our large events, they support our businesses, they build community, and they attract tourists, as mentioned, so with half of those attendees, that's thousands of people coming to the Bothell area and seeing how wonderful this community is. We also produced six legislative events that connected our businesses with civic and state leaders, so we had our City Council Candidates Forum that we produced, also our Legislative Luncheon that connected our community with not only the Bothell, but also the Kenmore elected officials. We did go down for a Chamber Day to advocate on behalf of our businesses, we just did that again recently this year, and we participated in the legislative send-off in partnership with, I believe it was the City, the School District, and certainly UDA Bothell and Cascadia as well. We produced, excuse me, 16 grand opening ribbon cuttings for businesses who are choosing to open businesses in our community. We want to thank all of the staff and the council that have come to welcome those businesses along our side, it is just a testament to our community that businesses are continuing to choose Bothell as their place to do business. We also had our community open house that attracted hundreds of community members and showcased 50 vendor booths, the most vendor tables that we've ever had, it was in the beautiful Mobius Hall in the Cascadia, UDA Bothell campus. It's a free local event that we produce every June, and the whole purpose of the event is to connect our businesses with community members. So, it is a free event, it is open to families and everyone throughout our community, and it's a lot of fun, if you haven't been, it will take place again this June. We also produced five luncheons and 10 general meeting events with the focus on networking and professional development. So, the challenge for us that we have is finding unique programs that support all of our members. As Andrea mentioned, we have some members who have zero or one employees, and then our large community members that are active in our chamber that have 50 or even thousands of employees. So, we of course thank the city for producing the State of the City of Bothell Luncheon, we have Networking Breakfast, all different events, this is just sort of a taste of some of the professional development opportunities and the speakers we bring to our events. Most of the ones listed here are at our general meeting, which is our free monthly event that we produce at the North Shore Senior Center, and so we really focus on accessibility, so it's accessible for businesses of any size, and again, monthly, free, there's even coffee, food, everything, and we welcome you to attend those at any time. We also believe in supporting our community and giving back. To that end, we gave away a $2,000 scholarship to a student at SAS, the Secondary Academy for Success Alternative High School in Bothell. We also chose to have that scholarship be our fund in need at our auction, so we could continue to raise money to support that program moving forward. We raised over 800 pounds of food and $12,000 to support the North Shore Senior Center in their food bank program. So as they grow that program, we want to continue to support them, to feed those in need in our community. We also offer a 50% off nonprofit discount, so of our 400 members, 53 of them are nonprofits, which is unique to chambers around this region, and so that is reinvesting every single year over $13,000, because we believe that a chamber that has a really dynamic group of members is valuable to everyone. And with that, I'm going to pass it back to Andrea to talk about the partnership between the chamber and the city.
So, it's really important that we take a moment and really talk about and thank you guys for the partnership that we have together. One of the things I want to make sure to mention is that all of you are chamber members, and all of you are chamber members, so anybody that is with the city is welcome to come to any of our events, but I want to take the moment to say to thank you, because it was an opportunity for you to hopefully connect with the business community in a, in a different way. But thank you so much for your support for the Bothell Block Party and Brew Fest, for the Bothell Underground Beer Festival, for producing the State of the City Luncheon, where we had over 150 attendees, because the business community does want to hear from the city, and it shows because they come out, and being the official began-at-Bothell Visitor Center, and thank you guys so much for your support, because that is possible because of the lodging tax that you help us with. So, the City of Bothell has selected to partner with us as the official Bothell Visitor Center for over 15 years, and because of that, we've been able to provide personalized resources to hundreds of visitors and new residents each year. Now, one of the things that did end up happening is we had to move from Country Village, and one of the, we were able to partner with the city to try to find a location, but one of the things that, we mattered a lot to us is that where can we be that we can still be a strong visitor center, that we can support the residents, and thank goodness, we were able to, with your guys' help, I don't want to not mention that, find a spot on Main Street in downtown Bothell and secure a five-year lease. So we just can't say thank you enough for, for that support and helping us make that happen. But also, we've been listening to our members and to the city, and to offer even better customer service, we're extending hours to include Saturdays during the summer, so very exciting. So, I'm gonna take a minute and, so share with you guys my personal chamber story. So in 2012, I opened Bothell Physical Therapy, and, oh, so sorry, I opened Bothell Physical Therapy, and six months before my opening date, the best advice I ever got was join the local chamber. So I moved down from Bothell, having no connections, I didn't know any physicians, I had no place to get clients, but I did go to every meeting and every event, and I volunteered as often as I could, and from there, I started to become part of a community, and from there, I started to get patients. And I credit the chamber with my initial success, we were profitable in the first six months, almost unheard of, and we grew from a clinic of two people, me and my office manager, insurance finder person, I, I didn't check the insurance benefits, and, and grew it from two people to 10 people in 2018. That's me and my original business partner, almost seven years ago, and, and the clients grew from zero to 800. And I, and when we did the research, my clinic was the only clinic in our company that didn't have clear referral sources, and I believe it's because my referral sources came from the community, and you can't pick an epicenter. And I think that's where the Bothell Chamber really supported me. Now, many of you probably do not know, I have since sold that clinic and moved on and changed careers, but I am so proud, because it's still successful and it's thriving, and I believe it's thriving because it is still offering phenomenal services, but also because it's still deeply tied into the community, it doesn't matter that I'm no longer there, it is a part of it, it is part of the community, and that's because the chamber, and I just can't say thank you enough for that. So, so just, so you guys know, like, it was just a really big deal for me, so I'm very passionate about the chamber, I will never not be a member, and I am eternally grateful for it. So, yes, thank you. So, the Bothell Chamber is here to support the endeavors of not only the business community, but also to support your endeavors, things that we have done, as we endorsed and supported the safe and secure Bothell propositions. The sustainability team has connected with our members more than once regarding the single-use plastic bag changes. The Finance Director, Brad, oh, I am so sorry, Bruce Blackburn is coming to our Business Advocacy Committee to talk about the Canyon Park updates. And then we welcome you guys to go after your endeavors by either coming to or taking up some time at the monthly general meetings that we have set aside for city updates, because the, the business community wants it. We have chamber committees, should you be interested, and we have representation on our board with Jeannie Ash, which we are very grateful for, so thank you, Jeannie. And we have grand opening and ribbon cuttings, you guys are all welcome to join. So thank you for connecting with the Bothell business community, together we can build a collaborative and connected, vibrant community. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and one last note before we go, I just want to express my gratitude, the whole entire staff at the City of Bothell is just incredible to work with, and we just, we thank the staff for the support, ongoing support and connection with the chamber, and thank you to council for supporting our endeavors, we really believe that the chamber and the city can work very collaboratively together for a really great community. So, thank you all so much, and we, we look forward to having the Finance Director at our board meeting, and Bruce Blackburn at our Business Advocacy meeting to talk about Canyon Park. So thank you all so much again for having us here, we really appreciate your ongoing support, and thank you so much.
Thank you very much, what amazing 2019 you had, so, thanks for sharing. Councilmember McAuliffe? Yep, please do.
Thank you. So, first of all, Brittany and Andrea, I'd like to really thank you, your presentation was excellent, and, you know, I was a founder of the chamber in 2003, for the Greater Bothell Chamber, and before that time, we had many changes and things didn't always stay together, so thank you for the work you've done to build it since then. There's a couple of things that I want to share with you, just because I think it's important. So one of the things the city is doing is putting two youth, young people on the Arts Commission and the Park and Rec Board. As I look through their applications, here's the kind of thing I listen to that I hope that you will also think about as you move forward. Our youth want to have a voice in art festivals, they want a partnership between the city, builders, and the artists, they'd like youth representation in Bothell, an art competition, and they want their voices to be heard. Sometimes we celebrate the Wine Walks and the Beer Walks and all this, but there isn't a whole lot for our young people, so please, I can share that with you, of those young people that really would like to have a voice and like to have activities that, that include them in what we're doing in our, in celebrating Bothell. And also, here's something I think is quite interesting, as we move toward the Bothell Friday Market, I'm beginning to realize, as I researched markets and also attended the Farmers Market Conference, that equity and diversity are really important to bring to our city, and as I talk to different people who have different cultural differences, they're so excited about hopefully becoming an international market. So I'm working toward that, I'm not sure I'll get there this year, but it's something that I would like you also to be aware of, is that international feeling and sharing cultures. So thank you for your work.
Deputy Mayor Zions?
I have a question. I will confess, I have the business, I have business incubator envy that Kenmore's got going on, and I noticed that they're a part of the chamber. Have you noticed people in the, in the incubator moving out and becoming independent? I mean, what has been your touchpoints with that? And should I be more jealous of what they've got going on on the incubator?
Yeah, so, it is a City of Kenmore effort, so although we are supportive and a partner in it, it certainly is their endeavor, of course, funded partially because of Port of Seattle grants and other things, but I think they would say that it has been a very successful program. I think the challenge for Kenmore in particular is they have a severe lack of commercial space, so a lot of times if people are flourishing and becoming very successful, they're having trouble finding a great location for them within Kenmore, which is ideal for the city if they stay there, but they are seeing people that are absolutely growing. Red Barn Engineering is an example of someone who was in the incubator and has since grown out and stayed in the City of Kenmore, but others are, are growing and sometimes finding alternative space that aren't within the city, but it's been a very successful program, yes.
Well, that, that's good, I, I mean, that's good information to have, that if, you know, if we ever have an opportunity to bring that to Bothell, we need to consider where they graduate to if we want to keep them in Bothell, so that's good information to have.
Yep, a very important piece.
All right, thank you.
All right, thanks again, Brittany.
Thank you.
All right, on to a city manager report, anything? All right, council reports, anyone have a committee report? Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So had a couple committees that I attended, MPSR, MP, I almost got that wrong, NPRSA, fabulous, it was great hearing what Economy Fence did for our senior center and our community, sense of community working together, I can't thank them enough for what, what they've done for us. We've had, been having discussions on how we move forward with NPRSA, we had sent out a letter of interest, who could come in and help us, to the member agencies, obviously only one responded, that would be Bothell, sense of community, taking care of our own, and so we're moving to the next phase where we're gonna get a proposal on what that kind of looks like, and then we will hopefully, the NPRSA will, will present something back to the, to the council, so, looking forward to having that. There's a lot of work that needs to be done on the senior center, so as we get these funds in, just making sure that we're being fiscally responsible, procuring contracts and things like that properly are gonna be important as we move forward, and make sure that we continue to have the public's trust on how we're actually levying and taking care of that money. The next committee meeting is the Executive Board of the PSRC, Puget Sound Regional Council, there was a lot of discussion, this go-around, about projects that are gonna be coming up, and then around the 2050, Vision 2050, so more to come on that, but one of the things, we have several projects here in Bothell that we're putting forward, and I'm excited to be able to sit there and, and be able to give some input on what's, what's important to us here in, in our local town, Bothell. The next committee is Community Transit Board, so I was recently elected to the Board of Community Transit, I did my orientation this past week, I'm excited to report that Community Transit is thinking about the spine, the networks that connect all of us up here on the north end, a lot of the things that, conversations around what the growth is going to do to transit in the future, and how they're gonna be busting at the seams, talking about Swift Line and the importance of bringing Swift Line from Snohomish County down into King County, connecting our downtown Bothell core with our uptown, regional center in Canyon Park, and then focused on the growth of community transit, and that they're going to have four brand-new facilities that they're bringing online here in the next few years, so, a lot more to come on the Community Transit Board, I'm excited to be on that board now, representing us here in Bothell and the needs of connecting our community, community-wide, both north, south, east, and west. That's my reports, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Thompson?
I went to the Regional Law Safety and Justice Committee last week, and the subject of the day was school and youth safety, so got to learn about some things that local cities are doing around, and as well as local organizations to not only keep our children safe, but provide them resources to move them away from a path that would leave them engaging with the system.
All right, thank you. All right, on to visitor comments, so we have one signed up right now. So, each person addressing the council will give his or her name in an audible tone of voice for this record, and unless the council grants further time, shall limit the address to three minutes. shall limit the address to three minutes. No person other than the council and the person having the floor will be permitted to enter into any discussion, either directly or through a member of the council, without the permission of the mayor. So, first up, we have Lucy Toner with the Bothell Youth Court.
Hi, my name's Lucy Toner, and I'm here from Bothell Youth Court. So, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm currently the President of Bothell Youth Court, and I'm here tonight in the interest of BYC. We, as a youth court, want to share with the community an event we are hosting on March 9. We want to personally invite anyone interested in learning more about Bothell Youth Court and what we do for teenagers within the City of Bothell to our Parent and Community Night on Monday, March 9, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Bothell Municipal Court. We will have a hearing that evening, which will give everyone the opportunity to see our work for the community in action. Afterwards, a Q and A will be hosted by the youth, and while everyone may help themselves delight refreshments. I hope you will consider learning more about Bothell Youth Court by attending on March 9. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to give a public comment? All right, going once, going twice. All right. Looks like we are on to Consent Agenda.
I move we pass a consent agenda?
Second. Thank you very much. So, we have Councilmember Agnew with the motion, Councilmember Thompson with the second. Any discussion? If not, place your vote. We'll try that again. All right, so we have unanimous in favor with Councilmember Dewar, absent and excused. All right, we have Danae McGee with, we have, let me find it, AB 2035, Consideration of Adopting the 2020 Visitor Development Spending Plan and Contract with Street Sense Consulting.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council. Thank you for this opportunity to be here tonight. My name is Danae McGee. I'm the Tourism Manager here at the City of Bothell, and I'm here in, with support from the Bothell Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, or LTAC, as I'll be referring them for the rest of this presentation, as we present the 2020 Visitor Spending Plan for $499, $636, and the Street Sense contract for $245 for your consideration in adopting. I will also be presenting 2019 highlights and accomplishments, which is quite similar to this 2020 plan and contract. So, I'd like to begin by talking about what LTAC is. I forgot to put it in presentation mode. Okay. So, LTAC here in Bothell was started. I'm sorry, I'm having technical difficulties here. Okay. It was formed back in 2001, when we decided that we wanted to dedicate hotel-motel taxes to guests coming to our Bothell Hotels. According to RCW, LTAC is made up of one member of council, and in this case, it's Deputy Mayor Zornes, and at least two recipients of the tax and two contributors to the tax, which are hoteliers. Our makeup includes three hoteliers and three recipients of the tax. LTAC meets monthly, and I am the staff liaison for LTAC, and they set the marketing and spending plan for council consideration. Also, according to RCW, expenditures from lodging tax funds are restricted to three activities, which include tourism marketing, marketing and operations of special events designed to attract tourists, and operations of tourism facilities such as a visitor center, which is the case for Bothell. In your packet, you have a detailed spending plan, but for this presentation, I'm just going to give the quick overview of it. As you can see, in the three areas that we can spend money, we do spend and contribute to these areas, the majority of which comes toward tourism marketing. And that supports staff, as well as the contract with Street Sense. It also includes a couple of other contracts with funny names like CrowdRiff and Van Wango, which I'll talk a little bit more about later in the presentation. We also have a grant program that supports marketing activities of, of events designed to attract tourists. We normally dedicate $50,000 a year for this. We did receive one proposal for 2020, and we funded it in the amount of $10,000. We also contribute to facilities, and that goes toward the contract we have with Bothell Kenmore Chamber of Commerce, as you know, to be our official visitor center. We also contribute to the Holiday Lights along Main Street, and we have some more signage that's going along the Sammamish River Trail that invite people to come and, and become active in downtown Bothell through our restaurants and shops. So, as you may recall, back in 2018, council adopted the biennial budget, and the amount that council dedicated to the tourism program for 2020 is that amount right there, which is $499, $636. And if you have further questions after the presentation about some of those detailed aspects to the plan, just let me know. All right. We also have a Tourism Reserve Fund, and, and this is a special fund dedicated to tourism only. It is not part of the general fund, because these dollars can only be spent for tourism. So, we had a beginning fund balance back in 2019 of $766. We typically bring in revenue about $400,000 a year, and we're right on the mark. We run about two months behind in receiving this revenue, so we are estimating that we'll receive about $20,000 for December of 2019. And we had expenditures in 2019 of $531,206. So, we're looking at an estimated fund balance of $631,671. So, looking at 2020, we start off with that same amount. We are forecasting revenue, again, of $400,000, and we have our spending plan of $499, $636. So, we're estimating to have an ending fund balance for 2020 of $532,35. Okay, so, also, as you may recall, the new brand, Begin at Bothell, and the new website launched in April of 2019. Also, what launched that same month was the contract for 2019 that we had with Street Sense Consulting. And Street Sense managed the digital marketing and advertising that we ran through the 2019 So, the overview for what we are trying to promote is the perfect home base for your next adventure. So, we want you to begin your adventure or your vacation by basking in small-town wonder and charm at the perfect launchpad for Northwest adventure. From quaint streets brimming with breweries to captivating waterfall hikes, Bothell is the perfect tub that inspires visitors to choose their experience. Whether you're seeking a moment in nature or a girls' weekend at a winery, Bothell is where you'll want to begin. And this is a image of our website. And this image sets the tone and the voice for this campaign, which is welcoming and adventurous. Confident and clear, the goal is to inform potential visitors of the opportunities and activities in Bothell by communicating in an energetic manner that evokes Bothell's down-to-earth and gracious spirit. The visual identity reflects today's visitors that choose their travel based on captivating moments that they've seen before actually experiencing them. These images consist of high-resolution and consistent color schemes that inspire adventure and the mystical aesthetics of Bothell. This mystical aesthetic is especially so in the fall and winter months, when we see the fog along the Sammamish River. As you recall, I did mention CrowdRiff before, and CrowdRiff is a platform that uses user-generated images that we collect from other people's experiences when they are in Bothell. So, these are all generated from other people. So, it's other people telling their experience in Bothell, as opposed to us telling it. So, it's quite authentic, and as you can see, these are beautiful images that really tell the story of your community. I'd also like you to please note up here at the top, there's the offers and the news section, which I'll also be talking about here in a second. Okay, so, we post three times per week through three social media channels, which is Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter. We use user-generated content, which is those images that you saw on our, on homepage of the website. Original content, supplied posts, shared posts, that we do three times per week through all of these channels. We have four content mixes that reflect the interests and pastimes of our four audience profiles. They include: #BeginAtBothell. This is our user-generated content campaign to encourage and generate frequent travelers to share their experiences. BASK, highlighting the slower-paced activities from exploring local shops to relaxing in the outdoors. Bytes and Brews, featuring our food and drink scene. And Beyond Bothell, surrounding adventure to be had when using Bothell as your home base. We also do a monthly e-newsletter with one e, or one re-mail to all of those individuals that did not open their e-newsletter the first time. And we blog every other week. Through the research that we did when we were building the new brand, we have determined that we have four targeted audiences, and these include adventure seekers, city escapist, beverage lovers, and nature lovers. They all are between the ages of 30 and 55, and we focus on a radius not only just in Bothell, but also 25 miles beyond Bothell. Because, as we all know, when we are on vacation, city limits do not matter. We're interested in everything that we can get to in the shortest amount of time. So, whether you want to take a short drive to Woodinville and do some wine tasting, or head to Seattle, or maybe go do some whale watching, or head up to the trails and ski resorts, we're all very, we're all in very close proximity. And we target these age groups and these audiences in Los Angeles, San Francisco, Portland, Spokane, Walla Walla, and Vancouver, British Columbia. Now, this campaign is not only through the social channels that I mentioned, but also through some paid digital advertising. So, our adventure seekers, their behaviors are there, interested in vacations, travel, and adventure. So, as I mentioned, that content mix that we're, we're focusing on, every three ti, three times a week, we are listing information about something to do with maybe skiing. Or our city escapist, these are vacationers interested in health and wellness, shopping and eating out. Our beverage lovers, they want information about breweries, wineries, vacation and travel. And our nature lovers, they're interested in nature, adventure, and outdoor enthusiasts. So, with the Street Sense contract that we had for 2019, they guaranteed that we would have a minimum of 47,500 website visitors to our new website. They also promised that they would generate 20,000 opt-in email subscribers to our e-newsletter that we do monthly. And keep in mind, too, that with these blogs and these e-newsletters that we do, there are links that click back to our website, so that we're generating more activity on our website with everything that we're pushing out. So, our website traffic for the year, in 2018, we didn't collect data for our impressions, but for 2019, we collected over 17 million impressions. So, that is the number of times that people saw Begin at Bothell, or saw our website, or clicked to, to something through the blog or the e-newsletter, or through the social. As I mentioned before, about the visitors to our website, in 2018, we had 3,043, and we did surpass that goal for 2019 and had over 55,000 visitors to the website. The sessions greatly increased as well. In 2018, we had 3,529 sessions and over 128,000 sessions to the website in 2019. And our page views went from 6,532 to 49,100. So, in all, we did quite a great job at improving the traffic to our website, which tells the tone and the spirit and the, and the idea of, of what we're trying to portray about why you want to come to Bothell to stay. And I'd also like to note that in 2019, we received three national awards with marketing companies that acknowledged the beautiful website that we created. We had 4,436 opt-in e-newsletter subscribers in 2018, and for 2019, we also surpassed our goal of 20,000 and had 22,938 subscribers opt-in to be part of our e-newsletter. Now, as you know, not everyone opens those e-newsletters, and so we do re-mail once a year, and for 2020, we'll be re emailing twice a month. But our open rate is at about 23%, which is extremely high for e-newsletters. All right, so our social following. Excuse me, let me find my page here. We did some improvements with our social following as well. So, in 2018, we had about 8,500 social following, and we moved that to 9,405. We're really working to change the demographics of our followers, so we are seeing some slowdown in following, but those are people that are truly outside of the Bothell area. Our top tweet for the year was #BeginAtBothell. What's a day in Bothell without a pit stop at Captain Neon, the former high school turned bar, hotel, and theater? #BeginAtBothell. Our top Facebook post was the one here for Woodinville Wine Country's Boot Camp, where wine lovers can experience in-depth wine seminars. This just gives you an idea of what the social and Twitter and Instagram posts look like. This is our #BeginAtBothell post that we did, focusing on what we have here in Bothell. We also had our top performing blog post, which you can see was about everywhere to go for outdoor musics, music this summer, which featured our Music in the Park series, as well as the Chateau St. Michelle Summer Concert Series. And if you have not subscribed to this, you can go to our website and include your email address and become a subscriber. Our top performing native ad, this is where we, where we take ads that mirror the article that's being featured. So, Katy Perry's Dog Nugget stars in music video for her new single, Small Talk. And you will notice that our ad is the top dog-friendly spots in Washington. So, this was our top ad through native performance. Our digital advertising also includes ads on Bing, Facebook, and Google, and these are samples of what those ads look like. We also did some print advertising, and this is a separate contract then with Street Sense. They did do the graphic design work for it, but the cost to do this print advertising was outside the scope of the Street Sense contract. We did an ad in the Seahawk Playbook for 2019. We had a full-page ad featured in the Woodinville Wine Country magazine. And we also had a half-page ad in the Payne Field Welcome Magazine, which is just a gorgeous publication, if you haven't had a chance to see that. We also did a half-page ad where we partnered with Snohomish County Tourism Board to do the United Airlines dossier, and that dossier only goes out twice a year. And that dossier only goes out twice a year, and it features one state every, you know, biannually. So, it's not very often that Washington State is featured, but it was featured last year. So, we took advantage of that and did that final ad there to your right. We also did the Bothell Printed Map, which is featured in all of our hotels, as well as the Bothell Kenmore Chambers Visitor Center. And we are Woodinville Wine Country's official stay partner. So, we have real estate on their website, where you can click on that logo, which takes you to our website, as well as to our hotels page. Within that contract with Woodinville Wine Country, we also have received 100 of their Woodinville Wine Country passports that we then turn around and create our sip-and-stay package with. Where you can have discounts at one of our Bothell hotels, and you get up to two free passports to Woodinville Wine Country, and that passport is good for a year. We also started our Free Mobile Passport, which is that Offers page that I showed you at the start, that featured on our homepage. And this is a local experience that's assembled into curated opportunities for visitors, focusing on sustainability, because it's all digital and increased visitor spending. So, we had our Wine and Dine offer, our Beers and Gears offer, and our GalPal Getaway offer. So, you download this to your mobile device, and it's free to download. And then there are discounts at area restaurants, and breweries, and shops, and experiences like Teatro Zanzani. That one's under GalPal Getaway. It's a great deal. You should check it out. All right, so for our 2020 consumer engagement, Streetsense is guaranteeing a minimum of 60,165 website visitors, as well as an additional 20,000 opt-in email subscribers. The 2019 guarantee and the 2020 guarantee also states that they are going to increase visitor spending. So, over there on your left, it states that 4.7 million in visitor spending will occur based on our investment of 2019. And that increased amount that we're investing for 2020 means that they are guaranteeing that 5.5 million will be returned in visitor spending. For 2019, they're stating that $496,000 will be generated in sales tax and lodging taxes, and for 2020, $591,000. For 2019, they're saying that 3,954 visitor parties will be coming to Bothell as a result of this contract. And in 2020, 4,600 will be attending, will be coming to Bothell. We're looking at 7,393 paid room nights in 2019, and 8,600 in paid room nights for 2020. And the total economic impact for the 2019 contract will be 6.8 million, and for 2020, it will be 8.1 million. These figures are not in. It will take six months after the contract ends for us to actually get the results. So, I'll be returning to you in June to present the 2019 data. And then I'll be coming back to you in June of 2021 to present the 2020 data. This data is collected by an independent source. It's, I'm sorry, Texas A&amp;M will be conducting this. They will be not interviewing our already 69% of visitor travelers that come to Bothell. They'll only be interviewing those people that opted in to be part of our e-newsletter, as well as those 55,000 people that visited our website in 2019. So, with that, I've concluded my presentation, and I'm happy to take any questions or comments that you have.
All right. Thank you very much for that presentation. Do we have any questions or comments? Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you, Danae, and I was able to attend one of your LTAC meetings and hear some of this presentation that you made then about the contract and continuing that contract with Streetsense. And I was very impressed with what they were doing. But my question, just something I might have asked that day as well, how does the guarantee work? So, what if they don't meet those goals?
If they don't meet the goals, they will continue to work for us at no charge until they do.
And is there a time limit on that?
That's a good question. In the 15 years that they've been doing this, they've never missed their guarantee. So, I'm not sure, you know, I'm guessing it would just go on until they can do it. So, with certain activities that are going on right now, with scares and, you know, this potential slowdown in travel, we'll see, maybe something will change, but hopefully not.
I think that they've been doing an excellent job, and thank you for your work with them.
Yeah, they're wonderful to work with.
Deputy Mayor Zornz.
I can't add or quiz you any deeper on this, because your work is so comprehensive. I just want to say thank you.
You're welcome.
I just know every time LTAC meets, you've got good, hard data that we can chew on and think about meaningfully. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Thompson.
This might not be an entirely fair question to ask you. I'll preface. I'm really interested in like how the interviews happen and like what that guarantee, like how can they know? Like, do you know anything more about that?
I know a little bit. In fact, I was just talking to my coordinator that I work with, with Streetsense, and she was finishing up the report that she was doing for Fairfax County, who they also represent. And what's fascinating is the amount of data that we'll be able to collect and how that will help us refine who our targeted audiences of the people that will actually respond to the questionnaire. So, these are graduate students at Texas A&amp;M that are part of the Parks, Recreation, and Tourism Department. Dr. Petrich was here back in 2018 when we were beginning the process of developing the new brand and the website. And he did a series of community stakeholder meetings to ask input about, you know, what the brand could look like and more about what this community entails. So, the questions will be quite detailed, and it will ask if they did come to Bothell, yes or no. If you did come to Bothell then, did you stay in a hotel, or did you stay with friends? If you stayed with friends, where did you go while you were here? Did you go to a restaurant, or did you go shopping? About how much did you spend? If you did stay in a hotel, was it in Bothell? If yes, how many nights did you stay? About how much was it per night? You know, those are the kind of questions that we will be able to have with that data.
Thank you.
Councilmember Agnew.
I just want to say thank you very much for all the hard work you do.
Thank you. You're welcome.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, we have a recommended action here. So, we're not off the hook.
I move the recommended action.
Excellent. Thank you. So, we have a motion by Councilmember Thompson, a second by Councilmember McAuliffe to approve the 2020 Visitor Development Spending Plan of $499,636,000 and a Streetsense contract of $245,000 to continue driving economic development to Bothell through tourism channels. Any discussion? Seeing none, place your vote.
Hold on. Let's try this.
All right. Place your vote. All right. Passes unanimously with Councilmember Dewar, absent and excused. Thank you very much. All right. Now, on for the fun part. AB 20-038, 2020 Board and Commission Appointments.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Olson. As you know, on February 11th, the City Council interviewed applicants for various positions on the city's boards and commissions, and tonight, you are asked to vote to fill those vacancies. We have six positions open on the Arts Commission, that would include two youth positions, three positions on Landmark Board, one position on Library Board, three positions on LTAC, six positions on the Parks and Rec Board, which also includes two youth, and three positions on Planning Commission. So, in front of you, you each have a ballot sheet, and we must do this by written ballot. So, I will ask, once you fill that in, to pass it down to me, and then either take a break, or maybe move on to council conversations while I tally the votes. If we need to go a second round, we will go a second round. If we need to go a third round, we will go a third round. If we need to go a fourth round, we're prepared for that. Hopefully, we don't. But I would ask that you now fill out your ballots, please, and we'll get started. And then, once we tally the votes, we will have you make a motion to ratify the results of that voting. Any questions?
I don't see any questions. Councilmember Thompson.
On the board where there are not enough to circle, do we just write in?
There are each, on the tally sheets, you'll see that people have put in an alternate, if they're interested in serving as an alternate. And you'll see, like at the top, it'll say the alternates are in blue. So, you can appoint any of those people, or if there's somebody you particularly want to fill in as a write-in, you may certainly do that.
Thank you.
So, I will say during our interviews, we did ask Matthew Kuhn how he felt about being on the Landmark Preservation Board, and he was quite a mentor to that.
I'm also going to ask for a staff volunteer to help me tally these votes, because it'll take a while, and you're all just kind of sitting there, so I'll ask for one of you to volunteer. Thank you.
All right. Well, let's take a Well, let's take a 10-minute break and we'll come back at 7:20. We're going to extend our break for another five minutes to continue preparation for round two. Well, let's take a 10-minute break and we'll come back at 7:20. Well, let's take a 10-minute break and we'll come back at 7:20. Well, let's take a 10-minute break and we'll come back at 7:20. Well, let's take a 10-minute break and we'll come back at 7:20. Well, let's take a 10-minute break and we'll come back at 7:20. Well, let's take a 10-minute break and we'll come back at 7:20. All right. We're back from our break.
Okay. So I'm going to read to you who got in and what we need to do next. And actually, we did really good. What we need for the next round is one youth vote. So So, who got in for the Arts Commission is Kylie Chang received four votes. Katrina Sather received six votes. Kimberly Foley received six votes. Hillary Long received five votes. And Kylie Jittleferson received four votes. So, we need one youth left. So, please circle one on the youth vote.
Katrina's an adult.
I know.
Well, you said you.
No, I know. I'm good. Okay, landmark. We have three openings. Ray Thompson received five votes. And Judy Greaton received four votes, and she's an alternate. She originally applied for arts, but she added her alternative for landmark. So, she's in for landmark. So, we need one vote on the landmark board. And you can write in somebody or apply or add somebody who also is an alternate somewhere else. On library, Stephanie Adam received four votes. You do not need to vote for anybody on library. On LTAC, Nancy Pippenich received six votes. Shawna Pitts received six votes. And Joellen Kurtz received five votes. That one is done. On the parks board, Vladimir Bado received five votes. Manny Ocampo received five votes. Matt Yeti received four votes. Richard Molitor received four votes. And Whitney Negenbauer received five votes. So, that leaves one youth vote left. And on planning, we have Amanda Olson received six votes. Jeannie Elkirkx received six votes. And Sarah Gustafson received five votes. We do not need to vote for anybody on planning. So, again, to recap, what I need is one youth vote, one landmark preservation board vote, and one youth vote on arts, one landmark preservation vote, and one youth vote on the parks board. And I hope that makes sense. And if you have any questions, I'll come over there. We need one youth, one vote for youth on the arts board, just one more youth board member, one vote for landmark preservation board, and one vote for the youth on the parks and recreation board. And that's all we need. I can, and I will.
How about we do council conversations while we wait? This one, this one should go faster. Anyone have any topics, any conversing? Go for it.
Thank you. All right. So, I just wanted to thank Jeannie Ash and Danae McGee for kind of bringing a group together regarding our businesses on Main Street and on the Boulevard. So, we gathered with a group of people which had an interest in how we have vitality for small businesses in the area of Main Street and the Boulevard. So, Chamber of Commerce was there, Brittany Caldwell, Lynn Loggston, whose space we all are concerned about on Main Street, and hoping to help her get someone there that will really help the Main Street, myself, and Dick Paylor. So, Jeannie Ash organized this meeting, and we all had a vision about if we could go to a business that was not in Bothell and show them the dynamics of Bothell. So, the apartments, the businesses, and how they can really help a business to succeed. The data is what's really important. So, I went out to Snohomish and kind of walked around town and solicited two businesses that are interested in Bothell. One is very committed to coming, and the second one is like, well, I really like Snohomish. I don't know if we'd fit in Bothell. So, having that data to actually give people and say, this is what you gain when you come to Bothell, because people don't know Bothell. They come in and they go, oh, well, I don't see much going on here. And you say, well, let's talk about how many apartments are here. Let's talk about, you know, the income level for different businesses. So, I really appreciated our economic development. Jeannie Ash for bringing us together, and Danae for actually contributing as well. It was a good meeting.
Anyone else?
I could go real quick.
Sure.
I was gonna talk after we did the count, but might as well do it now, in case anybody's watching. I was absolutely blown away at the quality of people that we had apply for boards and commissions. This is my first time doing this, so I have no idea what's normal, but I was, I was just really impressed. And if anybody's watching right now, and for whatever reason you didn't get selected, please come back and apply in two years. That's all I have to say.
No, it was, it was, this is my second time doing this, so, you know, not that season. But, you know, I mentioned earlier that, what did we have, like 50 applicants, something like that?
Yeah.
And they all said, yeah, I think I'm capable, and I could take this on. And they, they were, and to have that talent bank, it's great that we can pull that, it's great that we can pull that, tap into that, and I just hope that nobody's disheartened. Because even if you're not, yeah, yeah, but even if you're not picked, it doesn't mean that, especially for our youth, you don't have to be politically minded right now. You're, you're gonna be, the fact that you stepped up means that you're gonna be involved the rest of your life, and you don't have to be a career politician. You are a community member. So, I just really love seeing, from the oldest to the youngest, stepping forward. Oh, just jump in.
Free form.
Yeah, I, I was impressed with the candidates, but who I was most impressed with were the youth. You know, if they are our future, I think we're in pretty good shape. I mean, they're pretty smart, they're pretty articulate, they're, they're a great group of people. I was very impressed. They're a lot smarter than I was at their age.
And then, and on top of it, I'm a parent of one of them, is that introverts tend to just, you know, they step in the background, and they're such powerful thinkers, and we had some of those kids step forward who weren't these big, bold personalities, but obviously deep, deep thinkers. And there were some adults that were also that, and, and I know getting, I was getting out of their comfort zone, and I hope they don't, I don't know if they're, they're coming through or not, but if they didn't, especially to the introverts who've applied, step forward again. It was, it was worth taking that risk.
I would just like to add that between Bothell and our volunteer coordinator Shelby and our Bothell Friday Market, we have a great need for a lot of artists, musicians, people who want to volunteer within our city. So, we should be reaching out to these people and saying, if you were not selected, there's still a whole lot of many volunteer opportunities for you. So, I will do that for one, for sure, for my Bothell Friday Market, and hopefully I can get some people who will really be excited about helping us.
Are we going to have to vote again? Is that what's happening here? Okay.
Looks like we're down to one category.
Which one? Youth.
Landmark Preservation Board. The wild card.
Okay, so for round two, we needed one on the youth, one youth member for the Arts Commission, and that member is Sophie Stobie. She got five votes. And we needed one member on the Parks Commission, and that member is Jace Branca. He got four votes. And you need four votes to get in. So, what we need, what's left for round three is one member, we still need one member for landmark preservation. I will tell you what we got. Hillary Long received one vote. Julie Rodwell received two votes. And Matt Kuhn received three votes. A person needs four votes to get in. So, if you would vote for one more person on landmark, then we will, we will be on.
A question, was Hillary Long, she wasn't in the arts then?
She did, and she had her, her alternate was the Landmark Preservation Board.
So, if we put her on landmark, then do we have a, is she?
Didn't she get selected?
Did she get, she got?
Yeah.
I have to go back and look at my sheet. Yeah, actually, sorry. Yeah, Hillary Long's not eligible.
So, could you repeat again what the choices are, so we could simplify?
I mean, you could write somebody in. Julie Gre, Gre, Greaton, Judy Greaton is an alternate.
Isn't she?
Is she also?
Didn't we vote her in the first round?
I don't think so. Yep, we did. Okay. So, Matt, Matt, sorry. Matthew Kuhn just got three votes for, he originally applied for Parks Board, and he, added his alternate as Landmark Preservation Board. He received three votes. You need four to get in. And Julie Rodwell was a member. She applied for planning, and she added her alternate choice as landmark preservation. She received two votes. So, you can either one of those, or you can...
So, do we need?
Write in.
Two on landmarks, or just one?
Just one for this round.
Yep, we just need one more for landmark. Matt, I think I can handle this, this round.
Thank you, Matt.
So, Rosemary, you were saying one, you were saying something at the end, and I wanted to make a follow-up. What were you, what was the last thing you were talking about?
So, I was talking about reaching out to those who have not been selected.
Right.
And offering them the opportunity to either join with Shelby as a volunteer coordinator or volunteer organizer, or with Bothell Friday Market as a volunteer.
I think that's an excellent idea.
Yeah.
I think it's an excellent idea.
Shelby's not there yet, but she is eventually going to be, as far as bringing in volunteers.
And I think that would have, that could have equally as big an impact as being on one, on one of the...
Definitely.
Boards here, too. So, that was a good idea.
Thank you.
We're good. So, Matt Kuhn received six votes for Landmark Preservation Board, and we are done. And now, we just need a motion to ratify the votes. If you ask me to repeat who got appointed, I...
So, move. Second.
I need a motion to ratify the vote, and I will say... I will say that I will be notifying all of the appointees and all of the applicants, actually, as to whether or not they got appointed. And also, the clerk's office will be assigning the position numbers and whether they're partial term or full term.
And we'll be, and we'll get a final copy of who's?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, and, and your voting ballot sheets are kept on the record with the agenda packet. So, those will be, if anybody wants to look at them. And the other thing I will tell you is that those that do get appointed will be invited to our OPMAs and PRA training on, I believe we've got it scheduled tentatively for April 6th, and they will also be getting their own city email account. So, we will get that, all that handled, but we will notify them tomorrow. So, I just need a vote for, to ratify the, the vote.
Yes, so we had Councilmember McNeil with the motion to ratify the vote, and a second by Councilmember Agnew. Any further discussion? Seeing none, place your vote. And it passes unanimously with Councilmember Doer absent and excused. Great job. Only three rounds. Perfect amount of ballots. Thank you, Laura. She knew. All right, so, were we done conversing? Looks like it. So, then we're motioning to...
A motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, so we have Councilmember McNeil with the motion, Councilmember Thompson with second. I don't see any discussions, so place your vote. So, we have five in the affirmative, and we have Councilmember Agnew, that's once to stay longer, with Councilmember Doer absent and excused. All right, have a good night. Thank you.